Good evening and welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Monday, October 29th, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Protam DePietro.
Here.
Commissioner Niemi.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner St. Ange.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Keevila.
Here. Commissioners, Commissioner St. Ange informed me earlier tonight that he was going to be unable to make the meeting as he's out of town on work. Could we have a motion to please, Commissioner Niemi?
Thank You, Your Honor. I move that we excuse the absence of Commissioner St. Ange.
St. Ange? Okay. Are we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse? Supports? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Do we have any agenda changes? I am going to add one item. We have Mr. Jake Guder here, who is our newest member of the Planning Commission, and we're going to add that under, just before appointments on number six for boards and committees, we'll welcome him here. Other than that, seeing Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved as amended.
All right. Commissioner DePietro supports? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to read through the boards and committees one last time. These boards or committees are looking for at least one vacancy. There's a couple here that have two, but the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, the Harbor Advisory Committee, the Hospital Finance Authority, the Investment Advisory Board, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Marquette Housing Commission, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Regional Rec Authority Business Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, the Sister City Advisory Committee, and the Sustainable Ad-Hoc Community Committee. So if you have any interest, please go to the website, www.mqtcty.org, or ask one of your friendly commissioners, and they will direct you as to where you can get an application and sign up. Seems like we're making great progress on these, and then we've lost a few, so we need some more able bodies. That's all I have for announcements tonight. We are going to move into our first presentation, and this is Board of Light and Power and Executive Director Kirby Juntales here. Kirby, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the invitation to present the board's position statement on Proposal Three, the constitutional amendment about 25 percent renewable by 2025. I wonder if the mayor would like the clerk to read that resolution into the minutes?
Sure, we can do that. City Clerk, do you have a copy of the resolution?
Thank you. This is a resolution opposing the 25 times 2025 renewable energy initiative, whereas Michigan's 2008 energy law, PA 295, was approved after careful evaluation of its impact on energy bills, the electricity needs of Michigan families and businesses, how renewable energy fits in with the state's generating fleet, and the price of power on the wholesale markets. And whereas the MBLP supports and is making excellent progress toward reaching the current standard of 10 percent renewable energy by 2015, and whereas any consideration of raising the state's renewable energy standard should wait until after 2015, when the 10 percent standard can be evaluated on a number of key factors, and whereas the Constitution is a foundational document meant to establish basic rights for the long term, it is not the place for energy policy, which should be determined by the legislature. Be it resolved by the MBLP with unanimous consent that the board opposes the proposed 25-by-2025 constitutional amendment and supports the legislative policymaking process adopted on the ninth day of October, 2012, and attested by the Chair of the Board of Light and Power.
Thank you, Clerk.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. I guess I was remiss in introducing our Chairman of the Board of Light and Power, Mr. Ed Angeli. For the public that has not had an opportunity to see this resolution, if you viewed the Mining Journal on Sunday, there was an op-ed with the resolution published, and also a position statement from the Chairman, Mr. Ed Angeli. So if the public is interested, they can go back in the archive and view that for themselves as well. I just have, I guess I approached this of presenting the proposal to the community and just have a few talking points, a few bullet points, to address the key issues that the board has with this proposal, and then open it for questions from the commission. The board believes that these mandates will increase costs and electric rates in the future. The board is concerned that these costs of transmission infrastructure bill that also are underestimated and will be substantial in the future. The Upper Peninsula is going through a difficult time now with the transmission situation. This will only exacerbate that, as these resources are positioned in strategic places like wind farms and strategic wind locations generally has no infrastructure to facilitate that right now. So we think it's a very ambitious goal to say that you're going to have 25 percent by 25, and the costs will be exorbitant, we believe. The board produces presently about 3 percent of its energy with renewables from our hydro facilities. We've been producing renewable energy for 123 years. The Board of Light and Power was established in 1889 with the Collinsville Hydro. So we're no stranger to renewable energy, and the board is not per se against renewable energy, only that we do it in a very controlled and good business principles and engineering Recently, as you recall, the board was also prepared to produce additional renewable energy through biomass at our Shira Station. We were involved with the Renewable Fuel Group at the KI Sawyer Base. We were prepared to, we were actually ready to burn biomass and had performed a couple of test burns when the renewable fuel project closed. We still look for those opportunities in the community. We thought it was a great fit for our community with the natural resources we have in biomass, and it would provided all of the renewable energy that we needed to meet the standard of PA 295, which is 10 percent by 2015. So those resources are still in place, and we continue to be interested in any parties that might approach us about those sorts of opportunities. Recently, in lieu of that, the board was on the open market looking for renewable energy credits to meet the standard of 10 percent by 15. As I said, we produce 3 percent through hydro resources. We could stockpile those credits from 2009 to 2012, and then there's a laddered approach to 10 percent by 2015. We were able to go on the open market and purchase all the renewable credits that we needed, in addition to the hydro that we produce. And so Marquette presently is satisfied with PA 295, and we're able to accomplish that. So we're in good shape with regard to that at this point. So finally, the board opposes establishing Michigan energy policy in the Constitution. The Constitution is very difficult to reverse. If we start in on 25 by 25, and we decide this is the poor energy policy for Michigan, it is very difficult to reverse this process, as opposed to having a full-blown analysis and participation of all stakeholders in the state with regard to energy policy and the legislative process. If you get five years down the road, you find out this is a very destructive thing for our economy. It was the wrong path to go down. It's very difficult to reverse the Constitution. The legislative process can be brought to the table again about reversing things or modifying things. We continue to do that and view that with PA 295 with a couple of state boards in Lansing, and some of the energy efficiency things that we are trying to accomplish in the state for small entities, the low-hanging fruit was very easy to pick, and it had demonstrated, you know, a good economic efficiency. Beyond that point, it becomes very, very costly to get that higher-hanging fruit for smaller entities. So we've been able to have dialogue with the MPSC about modifying some of those rules. If you have a constitutional amendment, it requires this whole process, again, of a half-million signatures, and to go through that again is very, very difficult and very time-consuming and expensive to do. So the board feels strongly that we ought not be executing energy policy in the Constitution. That's for larger issues, not for special interest issues, and so we support a legislative process to that. So with that, I'll open to questions.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Ryan?
Appreciate your coming, and actually, I raised the issue at our last meeting, because I think there were a lot of concerns, and it was before your announcement came out and the fact that you passed your resolution. But I think the one issue I had is really the fact that worst-case scenario, this could put us out of business, for the reasons you just stated. You know, you put this in the Constitution, and you've got to conform. And, you know, a major utility can do a lot of things, you know, they've got a lot of cards they can shuffle to make it work. You only have one power plant. So, you know, is my fear reasonable as a worst-case scenario?
Well, I think that, you know, I think we could adapt to that. I think we're pretty resourceful, and as I mentioned, we have biomass as a part of that plan. You know, we have resources that can accommodate that. The board is well-positioned, I think, to do that in the future. You know, and the investor-owned utilities, they go to the MPSC, and if you have a law mandated, then the MPSC is pretty well obligated to give them a rate increase, and so the corporation is made whole for that mandate. You come to small communities, well, not everybody here might think this is a good idea, and yet we are mandated to do it, but yet a commission may not have, you know, the interest, personal interest, to approve the rate increase for somebody like the Board of Light and Power to meet these standards. So it can be a lot of issues coming forward when you put it to a mandate like that without flexibilities.
And I guess you touched on it, but really, it can be more difficult for a small entity like the Board of Light and Power to deal with these issues than, as I say, a larger utility.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kirby, we really appreciate you coming out here to show your concerns, not just for the Board of Light and Power, but for your customers as well, because a lot of people don't understand the situation with this, and it kind of helped. And also, I thank your Chair, Ed Angeli, for his editorial in the Mining Journal recently. He did an excellent job of hitting all the issues right on the head, because, I mean, people had been calling me, asking me my opinion of it, and then he had came out with this, and it was very educational. So we appreciate it very much, because it's only a few more days before election, and we have to educate the voters that aren't sure or don't fully understand at this time. So this will really help. So we thank you all again for your concerns and addressing these. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Snyder?
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of curious. If, for some reason, this does pass, you know, I understand the concern if it doesn't, but if it does, what do you think our ability to adapt to the situation would be, and what do you think are some of the low-hanging fruit that we might be able to move towards to make it happen?
As I mentioned earlier, the board is well-positioned to take advantage of biomass. We have a wood products industry. The language would be structured that it has to be waste wood out of the woods. It can't be agricultural products, or, you know, Aspen plantations and that sort of thing. So I think we can adapt to that. Certainly, the costs are much higher. You know, Marquette enjoys the lowest rates in the area. We are 50 percent of our nearest competitor. It's not by accident. It's about, you know, prudent decision-making, and as my staff, retired from me here, is saying that we're playing with granny's money. Let's be prudent, and let's be judicious about our decision processes here. We did a wind study about 10 years ago, and an independent consultant who was interested in, you know, additional work, so he was hoping he could find wind in the area, surveyed the footprint of the Marquette Board of Light and Power, and said the only place that possibly would have commercial-grade winds was in sands plains. I went back to Air Force Base wind regime data, and it may have been a Class III wind at that time. So as much as we think we're a real windy place, we are not. Our topography inhibits wind flow. Flat plains for miles and miles is good. Potentially out in Lake Superior, that wouldn't be something I would advocate. The price of installing wind offshore is much higher than onshore even, which is higher than most other generating assets. And in Lake Superior, with five months of winter, maintenance would be almost an impossibility. So wind in our area is maybe good on a demonstration level, on a commercial level, and something that we would look at investing a lot of capital in. Really doesn't exist here, but biomass would be, you know, the thing that we would be looking at to address the situation here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Kirby, a couple of quick questions, I guess. Is there a current supplier of biomass?
Presently, no. Yes, not one individual in the area that you'd go to. There are, we have been in some dialogue with folks from down in the Iron Mountain area that, looking at supplying some biomass to us, much like in the same form that renewable fuel was working on.
Taking that one step further, my understanding is that biomass in the type of facility that we have in Marquette can only be burned in a mixture with conventional coal. It doesn't burn on its own. Is that a wrong assumption?
No, yeah, we did two test burns with the renewable fuel product, and we're very successful in that.
As a fuel alone?
That's correct. 100 percent.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ryan?
Do you still see a possibility of the renewable fuel project coming or serving the need you had hoped? I know they're kind of trying to work their way back in business with some different ownership.
Sure, and we continue to have dialogue with them about various products. It's not something that's on the front burner at this point with regard to fuel for producing recs. That material was a premium-priced fuel and required some mandate to get involved with that, and at that time, we did have that mandate of PA 295, 10 percent by that time. So that's how we got involved with renewable fuel back in 2008 or so. And then, of course, they decided to discontinue that operation, but they're working in some other areas right now.
Commissioner Niemi?
Thank You, Your Honor. Kirby, would it, if renewable fuel or a source of biomass becomes available, would it be feasible to burn that at Shira's plant versus purchasing the credits to meet the 10 percent limit?
Yes, absolutely. And certainly, we would make an analysis of what the market price was and what the price of energy and what the adder would be. You know, renewable biomass is a premium-priced fuel, so you have the typical market price for energy, and then there's some adder on top of that. That would be considered the price of the rec. You compare that against what you can purchase, you know, on the open market as we have recently, and we were fortunate enough to find some very favorable-priced renewable credits out there.
Well, I don't have a question for you. I'm going to switch gears a little bit on you. First, I want to thank you for coming tonight and informing us and the residents on this. But secondly, you've recently submitted your retirement papers, and on behalf of the City Commission and the residents here, I want to thank you for your service to this community. Under your leadership, our two boards have gotten along better and done better things together, and the community has benefited because of that. So I want to thank you. You've done a great job, and I wish you well in your retirement.
Well, and thank you. I'll echo the same remarks, Mr. Mayor, that it's been a pleasure working with the City Commission and city staff. Our relationship is as strong as it's ever been, and culturally within our organization, we serve the community, our friends, neighbors, and relatives. We take that very seriously, and we can pull on the same rope together, as we demonstrated in the AMI project and other projects that we may have down the future. I think it serves the community well, so, and thank you.
All right.
I'll be watching.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we've got a presentation, the City Charter Commission, by Chair Bob Kuliszek. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you for the invitation.
Oh, I thought you'd be wearing your T-shirt tonight. He's got a campaign T-shirt made for the Charter Initiative.
We do have T-shirts, but they're not for sale. They're only enough for charter commissioners, and we do wear them with pride. My name is Bob Kuliszek, and I'm Chair of the Marquette Charter Commission. As Chair of the Marquette Charter Commission, I'd like to thank you, the mayor, and the City Commission for considering a resolution this evening in support of the proposed city charter. I'm pleased to report that the nine elected members of the Charter Commission are unanimous in their support of the new charter. Members of the Charter Commission include Tom Baldini, Vice Chair, Robert Buzz Barabee, Sarah Cambenzi, Martha Conley, Mike Coine, Connie Mizuki, Tom Tourville, Cameron Howes, and me. I would ask the charter commissioners in attendance this evening to stand and be recognized, if you would, please. As Chair of the Charter Commission, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the members of the Charter Commission. Each member has made an important contribution to the drafting of the new charter. The dedication, hard work, and objectivity displayed by all of the members of the Charter Commission made the task of writing a new charter both rewarding and enjoyable. So I personally thank you all, and it's been a very good experience. Thanks to the city clerk, David Blue, and his staff, they provided excellent assistance throughout the entire process. The city is fortunate to have such dedicated, hard-working, and thoughtful employees. The Charter Commission also wishes to thank the City Commission for its continual support, providing information. We also want to thank the manager, the city attorney, department heads, and many city employees who helped out with the analysis that we needed to go through in making this particular charter. Last, but certainly not least, thanks to the people of Marquette who offered valuable advice and suggestions throughout. We believe that the proposed new city charter will enable our city to operate in a more cost-effective, open, and responsive fashion. With regard to what has not been changed, on the basis of our conversation with residents of the city, we discovered that the people of Marquette were not interested in changing the basic form of government. Consequently, the proposed new charter retains the commission-manager form of government while eliminating provisions in the current charter that are wasteful, antiquated, and confusing. It should also be noted that the proposed new charter will not increase the millage rate, nor will it alter the type of taxes collected by the city. Finally, the charter proposal appears as the last item on a very long ballot in the city of Marquette. Thus, it's crucial that voters be aware that this proposal is on the ballot. Every vote counts. If the past is a guide, our new charter could serve the community well into the 21st century. So I thank everyone who's been involved in the process. We have numerous brochures, if anyone would like to read more about the charter. There was also a mailing included in water bills, including these brochures. The document also, or some of the information from these brochures, appeared in an op-ed piece in the Mining Journal on Sunday. It's also on the website, along with the actual new charter. So I encourage people to become familiar with the issues, and we hope that they will support the charter in the election. So thank you all.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Next up, we've got a resolution, endorsement resolution of the revised city charter. City Clerk, do you want to read it?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Whereas the June 13, 2011, the City Commission appointed a 10-member charter study group and authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement for a comprehensive legal review of the current city charter, and authorized city staff to prepare an administrative review of the charter. And whereas the City Commission directed the charter study group to review the current city charter, and whereas the charter study group evaluated information and determined a complete revision of the current city charter was needed, and whereas at their August 4, 2011 Special City Commission meeting, the commission received the charter study group's recommendation that the city charter be revised and adopted a resolution declaring for a general revision of the city charter at the November 8, 2011 general election, and whereas the City Commission at their August 8, 2011 regular meeting adopted a resolution submitting ballot language declaring for a general revision of the city charter and the election of a nine-member charter commission at the November 8, 2011 general election. And whereas at the November 8, 2011 general election, the electorate of the city of Marquette overwhelmingly approved a general revision of the city charter and the election of a nine-member city charter commission. And whereas the duly-elected city charter commission held its organizational meeting on December 7, 2011, and selected the Honorable Robert Kuliszek as its chairperson and the Honorable Thomas Baldini as its vice-chairperson. And whereas the city charter commission subsequently invited the city manager and members of the city administration, the city attorney, representatives of the Marquette Board of Light and Power, as well as representatives from the Peter Wright Public Library to support deliberations, and whereas the city charter commission conducted a series of public hearings to gain public input and direction on the charter revision process, and over a period of months, held several meetings and completed the revision process through a dedicated, methodical, and comprehensive manner. And whereas the city charter commission, through its deliberative process, eliminated scores of redundant, antiquated, and conflicting provisions in the current city charter and has added provisions that will establish a fiscal year that aligns with state and federal government fiscal cycles, mandatory ethical standards for boards, commissions, committees, and city staff, requirements for a communications plan, procedures for the long-term lease of city-owned property, and periodic review of the city charter and requirements for strategic planning, requirements for continuing economic development planning, requirements for annual evaluations of the city manager and city attorney, plans to promote intergovernmental relations and cooperation, and the clarification of the relationship between the City Commission and the Board of Light and Power. And whereas the revised city charter was submitted for review and approval of the state governor's office and the state attorney general's office, and whereas letters from the Honorable Rick Snyder, Governor of the State of Michigan, and the Honorable Bill Schute, State Attorney General, have been received approving the revised city charter for placement on the ballot for the November 6, 2012 general election. Now therefore be it resolved that the Marquette City Commission hereby fully endorses the revised city charter and encourages citizens of the city of Marquette to vote in favor of the new city charter that will appear as a local proposition on the November 6, 2012 ballot, and signed commissioners Robert Niemi, Don Ryan, David St. Ange, Jason Snyder, and Frederick Stonehouse, and Mayor Protam Johnny DePietro, and Mayor John P. Keevila.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we approve the resolution endorsing the Charter Commission activity.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Niemi?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Ryan?
I think it's important to remind citizens that it started here. It was this commission that decided that this charter should be reviewed, and the process started, and obviously, we're very pleased with the way it all turned out. We just had an excellent group of people working on this project, and they've done the job they set out to do. And I was thinking about it, and maybe this is a bad analogy, but, you know, when I buy a new car, I get pretty excited about seeing that car in the driveway, or if I buy a nice high-definition, big-screen TV, I get pretty excited about it. If I put a roof on my house, well, you know, it's kind of a nice roof, but it's just a roof. You know, I had a roof, and I didn't have that big-screen TV before I got it. I kind of put this in the category of the roof. You know, it's not something you get as excited about, because, well, you know, we had a charter, and it seemed to be working, but it really wasn't. You know, and what's really more important to my house than the car or the big-screen TV is the roof, because if you don't fix the roof, you know, your house is in trouble. I think the same thing is true here. The city needed to have a new charter, and as Chairman Kuliszek pointed out, the citizens of Marquette did not want to change the system of government, but they did want to bring us into the 21st century. And so... And so, I think this really deserves our support.
Thank you. Commissioner Neame?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd analogize the charter as more like the foundation than the roof, and frankly, I think it excites me like a new 42-inch TV would be. The process has been amazing. I've watched many of the meetings, and I had my own personal concerns about what is good and bad in the charter, and I'd be watching, and I'd be wishing that I was there to put in my two cents and say, "Well, no, I think it should go this way, that way." But it's amazing how the group would come together and come at a resolution that I could, and I think anyone could, could live with. I think they just did an amazing job with this charter. I think it's another, you know, unique aspect of it, and a good aspect of it. Our current charter's served us well for 51 years, or perhaps languished for 51 years, or 61 years, wherever it is. This charter will have a 10-year spring in it that will say that we have to look at the charter, and do we want to change it, or do we want to not change it? And I think that's good, because sometimes these essential documents that provide the base of governments, our city, are just left alone, because it is a huge undertaking. And as I said, it's, we owe a lot to the members of the Charter Commission. They put in a lot of work. They got this done in a very timely manner, and I think they came up with a good product that I think all citizens of Marquette should support.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. When the Charter Commission met in 1951, there wasn't a lot of happy people at that time, because gas, it just went to 19 cents per gallon. Post stamps were 3 cents, bread was 14 cents. A new car was $1,500, a new home was $9,000, and there were no computers, internet, cellphones, color television, no microwaves, Medicare, and if you're under 61, if you're under 61, there was no you. Thank you for everything you did. Thank you again.
All right, any other comments?
I will just echo some of the comments that were made, and I think any time you end up with a good product, you've got to look at who was, you know, putting the recipe together, and I think we had nine individuals that were very well-qualified and did a great job working together. So, I thank each and every one of you, and I hope it passes, because otherwise, you're not off the hook, and you've got to come back to work, so. With that, we'll call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? And we've got one absent, so. Next up, we've got a presentation, archaeological work on Mount Marquette by Dr. Scott Demel, Northern Michigan University. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for some of your time tonight. I'm Scott Demel, Assistant Professor of Anthropology at NMU. One of the classes I teach my students is historical archaeology. We like to look at sites in the Marquette area and try to do some work, investigative work and some archival work, so we can kind of shed some light on some of the little-known characters in Marquette's history. And one of those sites that we're working on is on the south side of Mount Marquette, just out your back door here. We should have a slide here in just a second. There we go. I've presented to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board back in the fall of 2011, and they got approval to go out on Mount Marquette with my students, and we gave them an update this fall as well, and I'm going to give you a brief synopsis of our findings at the site. Won't take a ton of your time tonight. And the site is located on the south side of Mount Marquette, off the highest point, and it's near the Blue Trail, which you see here. It's accessible by both the vehicle and walking trail. And I discovered the site actually just hiking back in 2010 with my dog, just finding some surface artifacts, including some stove parts, as well as some enamel cookware. Halfway up the mountain, you find artifacts like that. There's a reason they're there. So, we began to do some work in this class in the fall of 2011. We took up students up the mountain twice a week, kind of got in better shape as the months went on, including myself. The first thing we did out at the site was to do a surface survey. Now, what we're doing is following normal, standard archaeological procedures, identifying surface artifacts with pin flags that you see in the image here, and then mapping those. This gives you an example of some of the enamel ware. There's buckets and cookware, as well as some teapots, spittoons, and other objects. So, the first thing we do after that initial survey is to map those artifacts into a site datum, which is a central point in which we measure everything too, and look for surface features, cultural features such as the cabin location. We actually have some level areas out on the site that are a good indication of where the cabin was. There's an opening in the canopy of the trees as well. And then, just down slope, there is a water source, and there's a hand-dug well there, which you can see in this image. We actually started to dig through that and even found the original enamel ware pitcher that they used to scoop out water. The artifacts that we found on the surface were mapped in and collected every day. We didn't, we tried to be sort of obscure about our presence out in the site, although we know we had some visitors, because we had things like iron bed frames that were propped up against the trees that we didn't prop up against the trees. So, we know we had some visitors, which is okay. The second stage is to do a below-ground surface survey, and this is using what's called a shovel probe survey, and we put this in a grid pattern across the site. We dig a hole and screen that material on a three-meter grid. And what we're doing is looking for artifacts below the surface. And in combination with the surface survey, what we're trying to do is identify areas in which we can put test excavations, as well as looking for subsurface deposits with steel probes. And I'm not going to play the video for you, but this is just some of the excavation that begins. These are small test units. We have three that we've completed, and we have a few more that we're working on right now. So, the idea is to identify artifacts, the exact depth of those artifacts, and what we're trying to do is teach students the sort of normal procedures for historical archaeology. Now, this site will eventually be recorded with the state of Michigan as well. Students also get involved with archival research, including some of the original land use. These are government land office survey maps, land corner notes. They also put together timelines. This happens to be the original purchase of the property by John Burt, various sales to the Peninsula Iron Company, Marquette Iron Company, et cetera. We even found a mining lease for the site. This appears to be a cabin that was occupied by three gentlemen that obtained this mining lease back in 1890. They actually, the lease is for the area just to the east, but they were also given permission to locate their cabin in suitable land, which is just to the west of that property where the water source is. So, their cabin's literally right next to the only water source. These are the occupants that we have discovered that were part of that lease. It was a five-year lease from 1890 to 1895, and then another individual, John Moss, took that over in 1895 to 1900. And then, the students are also following the timeline after the abandonment of that mining cabin. Some of the artifacts that we're finding, this is just a quick peek at the site map that we've created. The green here represent tree trunks. The rectangular gray areas are the level area where the cabin is situated. The pink are the units that we've excavated, and then there's a pink area there, too, which I'm going to refer to in just a minute. Artifacts include a couple of stoves. We have a wood-burning stove for heat, as well as a cooking stove, which is a fuel stove, tobacco tins, buckets, some of the brick you see in here for either support under the stove or for a chimney. Very little ceramics. Most of the wares that they're using happen to be the sort of inexpensive type. Lots of nails, screws, and bolts, and really, lots of, I think the most abundant pieces of artifacts happen to be stove parts. They're very strewn across the site. The glass analysis that we've conducted so far, we've got bottle glass. Don't have enough to tell what kind of bottles that we're using, but the glass from the windows, if you subject that to analysis, comes in between 1882 and 1920, which fits our window of occupation, as do all the other artifacts, including the Peninsula stove that you see up on the top, and then the cooking stove down in the bottom. We even found a single iron bed frame. This is a replica of the same kind that we have at the site, so they're, one of the three individuals was staying at the camp overnight. Spittoons as well. And of course, a variety of shells from the site, .38 and .22 caliber. And here's just a graphic showing a range of occupation roughly 1890 to 1900, and where those artifact dates. A lot of these artifacts are considered diagnostic and fit within that exact timeframe. Kind of a surprise, underneath the cabin and beneath those layers, we found prehistoric material. So, that's that pink area that I mentioned before. Mount Marquette is full of quartzite, which was highly sought even back in the 7,000 to 9,000-year range. So, people would travel vast distances for high-quality stone like Mount Marquette quartzite. Couple of the excavation units below the levels that had the historic material from the cabin occupation, we found prehistoric quartzite flakes, which is a type of flint-napping debris from stone tool manufacturer. Some of that is actually heat-treated, as you can see on the right. And we have a variety of stone tools as well. Bi faces on the left, these are kind of the original handy tool. We have a perforator on the bottom left for perforating hides, a little pointed tip there, and actually has some retouch on the edge of it shaping that tool, and a granite tool with a flat surface for grinding. We're out there again this fall with students, and at the end of the semester, there'll be a public presentation that we will probably do at Peter White Library or at the UC on campus, and we are also, I've been talking to Carl about the possibility of putting together an exhibit case here at City Hall. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Stonehouse?
As I recall from hiking out there, there's some pits located, I think, to the west of the site you're working. Did you look at those at all?
We've noted that they're location, but we have not investigated those yet. That's probably something we'll do in subsequent years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
What will be done to maintain this record, or perpetuate it, or keep it, other than possibly an exhibit case?
Well, what we usually do on an archaeological site like this is we prepare a report of investigations. So, we'll have photographs, as well as documentation of the entire process, and the analysis of those artifacts in the site. So, that'll be available as a public record as well. And the artifacts belong to the landowner, so, city of Marquette.
Seeing no other questions, thank you for coming. Very fascinating.
Thank you.
All right, next up, number five, proclamation, November as National Homeless Month. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas countless homeless Americans face homelessness every day, including youth, adults, and families, and whereas the downturn in the national economy and the increase in home foreclosures has significantly increased homelessness over the past three years, and whereas each year, the estimated number of homeless people greatly exceeds the number of emergency shelters and traditional housing spaces across the country, and whereas many people in homeless situations are forced to live with relatives and friends in crowded temporary arrangements, others may stay in temporary shelters, tents, motels, or other places, and whereas the ensuing winter weather poses extreme hardship for sheltered and inadequately housed people in our community, and whereas the city of Marquette supports all homeless persons trying to make a difference in their lives through employment, homeless self-help, empowerment, and other positive efforts, and whereas the residents of city of Marquette recognize the need to work together to solve homelessness and hunger in our community. Now, therefore, I, John P. Keevila, am Mayor of the city of Marquette, to hereby proclaim the month of November 2012 as National Homeless Month, and the city of Marquette dated this 29th day of October 2012, and sign, John P. Keevila.
All right, thank you. At this point, Mr. Guter, could you meet me up at the lectern? Welcome back, Jake.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jake Guter has served many terms before on our city's planning commission, and he has a lot of experience, and we're very happy to have you back on it. So, I've got a city of Marquette pin for you.
All right. Thank you very much.
And once you complete your tour, then you get a T-shirt and a pen. And that's it. And our admiration and respect. So, thank you again.
All right, I'm excited to be back.
All right, great. Okay, and we've got one appointment. Ms. Carol Johnson, Investment Advisory Board for a term ending 7/1/14. Commissioner Neame?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we appoint Carol Johnson to the Investment Advisory Board for a term ending July 1, 2014.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Neame, comments?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Johnson for volunteering to serve her city.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Exactly the same. Thank you for stepping forward.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. And again, if you could give your name and your physical address for the record?
Craig Steen, 528 East Arch, apartment number 5, Marquette. I'm here representing the NoCamen on Trails Network and the NoCamen on Ski Marathon, and will answer any questions regarding that item on the consent agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Chef Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. October 9, Mr. Keevila was typing for roughly 30 seconds during public comment before I finally paused. The format stipulates that all discourse be directed through the chair, and here he was looking down with his mind on something else. Mr. Keevila claimed he was setting the time. However, the clock is started after we give our addresses and is left alone until our time is up. It cannot take 30 seconds of keying to access the time. Monitoring the clock is evidently more important to him than what the person is saying, even when lives are involved. His October 9 excuse for setting the time is similar to his fireworks excuse that same night. On neither matter will he address the root of the issue. My prepared comment did not exceed five minutes. Obviously, seconds tick by when the chair is asked what he is keying, and to regain the context, I repeated a sentence as more seconds ticked. Then the chair smirked in amusement while I repeated unanswered allegations against six of you regarding Picnic Rocks. So, I stopped again because Mr. Keevila was acting rudely. Subtract the nonsense, and you'll see the comment was five minutes. After the meeting, Mr. Keevila said that I purposely misled the public on the city's level of authority over the fireworks. He had just heard me say that his published reason did not add up, in fact, the same reason he repeated, October 9. My comment was written with that in mind, not to mislead anyone. We play the record. The comment was very straightforward. Mr. Vita said he's working on contract language to keep the fireworks fiasco from recurring, the very recommendation you heard in my last sentence of October 9. This is all about getting proactive and learning from mistakes. Ironically, the manager was the one to initiate a contract revision, and Slope's ordinances as well, just as the fire chief was the one to finally post a guard at Picnic Rocks after you were advised twice with urgency prior to the Coast Guard rescue. You were literally waiting for someone else's child to drown out there, ignoring urgent advice in an instant replay of the attitude that prevailed here prior to the last death at Picnic Rocks, after the same six of you ignored urgent advice to post a guard then. Had you heeded the advice, that kid would be alive. A guard would have been there to warn him. A guard would have been there to warn him. Pardon the grandiose presentation, but it's a matter of fact, not anything for Mr. Keevila to smirk in amusement over is documented October 9th. One reason for these shortcomings is related to this male-dominated board. Members are too macho to be seen as giving in, or else they lack the initiative. The commission is accountable for the fireworks fiasco, for handling...handing a responsibility of such importance to an autonomous entity, that being the Fourth of July Committee. On last January...July 4th, we saw the result.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol.
Good evening. You're Mulankinen, 8 Marquette Drive. Hogwash to the previous presenter. This is continuous bullying of the commission, and that should not be allowed at all. Anyways, the fine job of the Charter Commission, which is duly noted by all the commissioners, and hopefully everybody will vote for that, will put the city and its operation back in the 21st century. Good job by all the people that were involved. Also by the Board of Light and Power, I've had the pleasure of stopping at the Tours Park from the conception of the dam and all the concrete that's been poured and the new hydro plant that's going to come in operation. That's also going to help the natural resources and producing additional power in our community through water resources. A lot of positive things in our community. And so rather than trying to dwell on the negativity of some historical events that have occurred earlier in the season, I think we need to press on with the forward thinking and look at the future of our community and what a fabulous job everybody is doing in our community. Thank you again for commission.
My name is Amy Conover from 419 North Fourth Street. I had a few questions about the Board of Light and Power, and I understand the rationale behind opposing the 25 by 25 proposal. Personally, I would like to encourage our Board of Light and Power and our local board to, whether or not this resolution passes, to make every possible effort to increase the city's resilience and reduce our dependence on fossil fuels as a source of energy. I believe it's good for the environment and for the future of our citizens. Had something else to say, and it skipped my mind. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to the consent agenda. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the October 9, 2012 commission meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $832,768.73. Item C, award the bid in an amount not to exceed $42,739.40 at unit prices bid for plow blades, plow shoes, and cutting edges to H&amp;L Masabi of Nagani, Michigan, being the low bid meeting specifications. Item D, determine there is no advantage to competitive bidding and approve the purchase of utility plow markers from Carsnake Composites of Newberry, South Carolina, in the amount of $7,180, being the lowest quoted cost. Item E, accept a grant from the MDNR Urban Forestry Grant Program in the amount of $5,000 for urban reforestation efforts. Item F, approve the trail access permit for the...excuse me, approve the trail access permit for the January 26 and 27, 2013 Nakwamanan Ski Marathon contingent upon receiving the group certificate of insurance and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the permit. Item G, direct the...direct staff to work with NMU's Native American Student Association in providing fee relief of $63 for their Hawker Peddler License for the annual powwow in March of 2013. And item H, authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution defining a day of work for the new MERS Defined Benefit Division.
Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we approve the consent agenda with a couple of exceptions. Under the bills payable, I would have us remove payment of expenses to John Keevila, John DePietro, Robert Neme, Jason Schneider, and Frederick Stonehouse.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Neme?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any comments? Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Commissioner Neme? Other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we approve payment of expenses for Mayor Keevila for his attendance at the MML Conference.
All right. Do we have...actually, it was for...
Well, if we do them all, then nobody else can vote or make a motion.
Mine was not for the MML, though. That was for the City Attorney Award presentation, so...okay, do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse, second. Any comment?
Money worth spent, well-spent.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And I abstain. Motion carries.
Probably do a couple. I move we approve the payment...expense payment to Mayor Protam DePietro and to Commissioner Neme for attendance at the MML Conference.
Okay, do we have Commissioner Schneider's?
Support.
Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
I abstain.
DePietro abstain.
Okay, two abstentions, and one more.
I move we approve payment for MML Convention travel expenses to Commissioner Schneider and Commissioner Stonehouse.
All right, Commissioner Neme?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
All right. Comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
And Mr. Stonehouse, you abstain from that as well? Okay. All right, that gets us through the consent agenda. Next up, number eight, new business, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding a resolution to adopt a new MERS Division linked to existing Public Works and City Hall divisions. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, under the labor agreements negotiated with the City Hall and Public Works bargaining units, the city has adopted a defined benefit plan with a different tier of benefits for new hires after October 1, 2012. Because new hires will be covered by a different tier of benefits linked to the existing divisions, closed division funding policies do not apply. Assets from the linked division can be used to finance benefits for members covered by both tiers, and the city should not experience the accelerated funding and short-term contribution spikes that occur when closing a defined benefit division. The current Public Works and City Hall Division will be closed to new hires. All new hires, transfers, and rehires will be enrolled in a new linked division. Anyone hired before October 1, 2012 would be in Tier 1. Anyone hired after October 1, 2012 would be in Tier 2. In order to adopt the new benefit levels, MERS requires the commission to authorize the city clerk to sign the attached resolution. Fiscal effect, no immediate fiscal effect. Reduced employer normal cost will occur over time as new employees are hired in under Tier 2 benefits, and the lower normal cost is blended with the higher normal cost of the Tier 1 employees. Recommendation, authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution and to establish a new defined benefit division linked to the Public Works and City Hall divisions, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution to establish a new defined benefit division linked to the Public Works and City Hall divisions.
All right. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything additional?
I think the background well describes what we need to do.
Commissioner Ryan?
I guess I'd go a bit beyond that and make sure that people understand that we are, as a result of the most recent labor negotiations, moving in a direction which many private sector and public sector organizations are moving as a way of reducing long-term pension benefits. And I wonder if our city attorney or our Director of Human Resources has anything they'd like to add to that.
I think Susan is here for that purpose, if you have questions, but this, as you said, was really the result of that negotiation process we went through, and this is really carrying out the terms of what we agreed. Now, MERS records this paperwork, so I think Susan might have other comments.
I think this will go a long way to helping make our pension plan more sustainable and reverse kind of the declining funding that we've seen the past few years, so...and still provide a good benefit for employees. I think it's a good solution for both reducing our costs and maintaining a decent benefit for our employees.
I would just like to add something we said at the time we approved the contract, and that is that this was a good effort on the part of both our negotiating team and those people representing the employees to deal with a very critically important issue, which we hear about constantly, not just here, but really throughout the state and throughout the country. And so I think being able to move in this positive direction is a real benefit for us, and so this is just part of the paperwork which allows us to make it work, but it's still critically important.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number nine, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding appraisal contract for Market General Hospital. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, on August 31, 2012, the sale of Market General Hospital to Duke LifePoint LLC occurred, resulting in the previously tax-exempt not-for-profit property becoming a for-profit taxable property. Due to the previous tax-exempt status, no complete valuation of the property has been performed by the assessing department. Therefore, a professional appraisal of the property is required to determine the true cash value as of December 31, 2012, which is tax day for 2013. An RFP for appraisal services was requested. Four responses were received. The proposals were open on October 9, 2012, and evaluated by the review team consisting of the city assessor, appraiser, and planning zoning official. The proposals were evaluated based upon experience, technical criteria, and cost. The results have been tabulated with MR Valuation Consulting LLC of Coldsnack, New Jersey, scoring the highest number of points at 142 points and at a cost of $72,500. Fiscal effect, this item was included in the FY 1213 budget as unauthorized but not appropriated in the amount of $74,000. The chief financial officer recommends using a portion of the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, or EVIP, allocation of approximately $330,000 to cover associated costs. The city attorney has reviewed the agreement, and the recommendation authorize the city manager to sign the engagement agreement, number CIT-010-R1, with MR Valuation Consulting LLC in the amount of $72,500 for the appraisal of Market General Hospital real and personal property. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I move we authorize the city manager to sign the engagement agreement with MR Valuation Consulting LLC in the amount of $72,500 for the appraisal of Marquette General Hospital real and personal property.
All right, thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, we've all been kind of waiting for the day when...since Marquette General has become a for-profit corporation, that it also becomes a taxpayer in the City of Marquette, which is something new, of course, because as a nonprofit, it did not pay taxes. But it doesn't come without some effort. This is a very difficult...maybe difficult isn't the right word, very technical, very specialized kind of evaluation process, which requires very specialized knowledge, and I believe our city administration has made a good recommendation of an organization that's...will be able to provide us with the kind of guidance we need on this subject.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Neme?
This is a necessary thing. I guess I have nothing more to add to what Commissioner Ryan said.
Other comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding firefighter cadet program. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, an increasing problem confronting the fire department is the depth of qualified local candidates for entry-level positions. We require that candidates for hire possess National Fire Protection Association certifications for both firefighter 1 and firefighter 2. The Michigan Firefighters Training Council requires a resolution in support of a fire department's efforts to establish a formal cadet training program. This will allow us to deliver basic fire training to any and all potential candidates. In the past, only candidates that were an official member of fire departments were allowed to attend this training. Incidentally, the Public Act also allows firefighter instructors with approval of local and state school boards to instruct basic firefighting in local high schools. Fiscal effect, no fiscal effect by this action. Recommendation, approve the firefighter cadet program resolution and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Make the motion to approve the firefighter cadet program resolution and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
All right, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second that motion.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to have you call Paul Enneretti of the Market Fire Department up to the lectern, please.
Paul Enneretti from the Market City Fire Department, and here to support the program and answer any questions you might have. I think it would be a good opportunity for young people in our area where they could take training through the fire department. There's also a portion of this that the training could also take place in the schools, and they could get to know the fire department, learn the inner workings. We all kind of do the same thing, but within our organization, there's a lot of specialties. And it's interesting, the different people that work for us, they kind of shine in different areas, they're good at different things. And I think a young person, if they could get to know the fire department, how things work, possibly they would want to take this training and then possibly get hired if they wanted to apply for a job. So I think it's a real good opportunity to get local talent in our fire department.
Paul, could you stress how many hours it takes to get to firefighter 1 and then to firefighter 2?
I'm not sure how it's going to work for this program, because it's going to take possibly longer, because we're...you know, it won't be an accelerated program. But I would think we'd work on a semester basis with the schools if it's structured that way. But once the training is completed, then they could take the tests and actually become certified for the fire inspector 1 and 2. But what I could do is figure out what...how many hours are involved in this and get back with you on that.
No, I wasn't going there. I meant for the present firefighters today.
For present firefighters, you know, it probably takes about two or three months of training to get through the program, but that's more accelerated. The way the system works now is you would either apply for a job with a full-time fire department like ours, or a volunteer fire department, and then once you're hired, then you go through the training. So this program's going to be a little different, where you can take the training first, and then if you're interested and you like what you see, then you can apply for a job once you get the certification. So it's a little different setup, but we're very excited about it, because again, there's a lot of competition for these type of jobs, and it's good to see where local talent could, you know, get involved with it.
I think where I'm going with this is that you're now no longer just a firefighter. You also have to have some kind of a EMT certification.
Right. In addition to firefighter 1 and 2, there's also EMT classes that are separate from this. Actually, those can be obtained actually through NMU or a separate program through the Firefighters Training Council. But again, like I said, there's a lot of specialties in the fire department. We do a lot of things other than fight fire. We do fire inspections. We do rope rescue. We do medical assists and medical rescues. There's just a whole myriad of things that we... There's just a whole myriad of things that we do that, and it's interesting, because every person in a fire department has their own thing that they shine at. As a matter of fact, I always joke, I always tell younger guys that come in, if you don't like what you're doing, don't get good at it, because, you know, it's, you can just see that they're, you know, heading in a certain direction, and so I just kind of razz them, you know, that way. But I think it's a really good opportunity for young people in our area to become qualified, and then have the ability to apply for a job with us.
Thank you very much. That's what I wanted you to explain to the public, all the different jobs that a firefighter does, and all these. Thank you, your honor.
All right, thank you, Paul. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Question, if I can. Assuming a youngster goes through the training, graduates from high school, does that give him a leg up within either your department or our department, or with any other local department?
Well, you know, it would, because, you know, the way things work now is a person would apply for a job in our fire department, and then we would normally do the training or set the training up for them, either at our department or through another fire department. So technically, they need to be hired first, and this program is nice, because we can introduce them to the training. They could be certified firefighter one or two, or both. And then also during that process, they could, you know, spend time at the fire department, kind of see the inner workings of the fire department, how things work, and see if they're interested, because it, you know, it's a really, it's a good job, but sometimes we'll hire people, and, you know, they're qualified, look, they're coming, but they'll find out that maybe there's something about it they didn't like, or, you know, the hours are long, or there's just, they have quite an adjustment. So I think this is nice, because they can kind of see things going in, how it works, see if they're really interested in it, and once they find out they really like it, then they'll, I think they'll even excel more.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Ryan?
I assume we have some kind of a model we're working with, existing training materials, that we're not inventing a wheel here?
Right, it's through the firefighters' training council, so it's already a curriculum that's set up. Now, the only difference is, is that, which is very unusual, but it would be, there's also a portion of it that could be set up through the schools, and the chief has started dialogue with the school system to try to see what, you know, could be done that way. So the training could be done either in the schools and/or at the fire department, so.
Commissioner Neme?
Is this voluntary, or would the cadets be compensated?
This is all voluntary, sure.
Okay, so the only cost the city might be some support materials or equipment, and that would be offset by the fact that we're getting a trained firefighter and not having to pay for the trained firefighter?
Right, yeah, totally.
Wonderful, thanks for coming tonight, Paul.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. What's that?
We have to vote, I think.
Yep. Do we have a motion on this?
Yep.
We do? That's right, Commissioner DePietro, all right. Any additional comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? I usually write down the motion maker, and I didn't on that one.
Just excited by it, I think, Mayor.
Number 11, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding Market Figure Skating Club. City clerk?
Yes, your honor, thank you. Background, the, for the past 15 years, the Lakeview Arena has signed annual user contracts with the Market Figure Skating Club for ice use at the facility. These contracts provide the arena with a predictable revenue stream, and the Market Figure Skating Club with a seasonal schedule of ice time. Fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena will receive a minimum of $46,360 in revenue. Recommendation, approve the contract with the Market Figure Skating Club for ice use at the Lakeview Arena for the period November 1, 2012 through March 15, 2013, for a minimum of $46,360. Authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Schneider?
Move that we approve the contract with Market Figure Skating Club as read.
All right, Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
Commissioner Schneider, comments?
No comments, other than, you know, it's something that we do, and it's a group that I'm happy that can use our facilities.
Commissioner Ryan?
We're happy to see our facilities used.
Excellent, any other comments?
With compensation as well.
No other comments, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, let me back up to number 10. City clerk, who do you have as a motion maker in a second?
I have Commissioner DePietro making the motion, and Commissioner Stonehouse supporting it.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up is public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person.
Frank Chet Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. October 9th, two items were pulled off the consent agenda that belonged under old business. There's a problem with the way you're conducting business when there's such a consistent absence of old business items. And then tonight, you listed the charter revision as a presentation, followed by a resolution, both in advance of a due public opportunity. A given excuse for handling the charter as a presentation is that the charter is up to the public to vote on. This doesn't explain why you left the public out of the mix. You're trying to set an impetus for the election, all to vote in a flawed charter. The review commission offered a pitiful public opportunity. At the earlier meetings, we needed to wait until the end for two lousy minutes, a last priority. Their document denies us the requested right to elect our own mayor and city attorney, because a majority of the members, some eerily familiar to this chamber, sought to perpetuate the status quo. Please vote no on the charter. We've recorded too many examples of how the current process doesn't work. Two charter members are running for commission. Shuwan Candidate Coin has yet to explain his actions of last January 30th, when he walked 70 feet to confront me in the men's room, with no other reason to be there. He threatened me three distinct times at the sink in a soft creepy tone, that something bad would happen to me if I sneered at him. It is funny, isn't it, John?
It is.
If he gets back on this board, he'll have his chance to explain. Mr. St. Anges' keen eye for a public expenditures will be missed. It's feared an oversight will blow by the other six members at the expense of thousands. The manager has asked, if he isn't already, to make sure all capital expenditures are aligned in the most efficient form before each item reaches the agenda. He's our last line of defense. With Mr. St. Anges' term ending, he's reminded that the ball's in his court to expound upon his allegations of last December 12th, so long as he instigated the manner. His outburst, as witnessed by most of you, was never apologized for or explained in any way. He was asked what difference a person's level of expertise makes, so long as the stated principles are viable. What land use aspects did he doubt when he challenged me on and off the record? I answered his concerns about never claiming to be a land use expert, but I only wanted my comments considered on their own merits, like posting a lifeguard at Pitnik Rocks, for example. Mr. St. Anges earned to run my land use comments by an expert, and to please report his findings. The latest example is the new home at the Pitnik Rocks Curve near Lake Shore Boulevard. For years, I told you a building there without adequate setback would appear on top of the boulevard, and ruin that portion of our most scenic drive. Back to July 4th, Mr. Kivela is credited for recommending to the committee that the fireworks be postponed. Yet the bottom line is, the commission pawned off an important job to an autonomous committee, leading to a poor decision that denied enjoyment to thousands of people. The accountable person called this hogwash, without offering any reason for such a foolish decision. Benders were upset to lose the thousands of dollars that a big Thursday night would have generated. All that hassle to transport the equipment to the park, for what? Rain one night and nothing the next. Last July 30th, Mr. Kivela annoyingly struck a chord when he stated that Mr. Ryan should get a gold medal for his motion making. Without having tallied the totals, I'd bet Mr. Ryan has made the highest percentage of motions per length of time on the commission than any member in the last 14 years. Mr. Ryan knows a majority of you follow what he does, which makes it safer on you other five to second his motions, and subsequently vote accordingly. It's charming to watch from the audience. However, this dominance by one man is not healthy for the commission, our citizens, or for our splendid environment. If he or anyone else, past or present, feel unduly blamed, let us delve into the record. We'll date and dissect every word that every person said, including mine, and assess accountability accordingly. For years, you've been asked to show my allegations are generally false, and I'd stop appearing. Tonight's my 200th meeting, and no takers yet. At the next meeting, five of you will appoint a mayor who we were denied our right to elect. In appointing a mayor, it's important to recall an incident of September 12, 2011, when Mr. Neme interrupted my completely legitimate comment. Mr. Ryan and Stonehouse supported him, threatening to violate our right to free speech. They clearly put their and the commission's interests ahead of the democracy and the oath that they're sworn to uphold. Please elect one of the other two current members as a mayor. May the public please refrain from electing candidates because they have a popular name, or they can afford the most signs. We need new blood in here, preferably women or men of a less exploitive mentality.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol. Anyone else wishing to comment? Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, we will move to commissioner comments. We'll start on my left, Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, your honor. I guess, I don't know if we do it at this meeting or the next. The next one certainly would be officially your last. I guess I'll do it at this meeting, and I'd like to just thank you for your leadership over the years. You're the only mayor I've known, so I don't have much to compare it against. But I do appreciate your leadership in the city. You will certainly be missed. It'll be the city's loss, that's the natural progression of our term limits, but I think it'll be the areas, hopefully the areas gained, and you can provide us the equal leadership in Lansing.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, I do have a few comments for this evening. The first being on the resolution of the BLP not in support of Prop 3. It's a little frustrating. I understand the reasoning, I can understand any industry gets nervous and a little skittish when, when a state constitution is going to dictate how they should operate. It doesn't matter if it's the energy industry, the auto industry, the food industry, everybody gets a little bit weird when there's a massive change on the horizon. That said, sometimes it's needed to put in laws, whether it's through a constitution or whether it's through legislation, to make the right choices. And we've seen that in a number of our industries, and all of our industries have been able to adapt. You know, it's not necessarily something that is easy, and adaptation might be really difficult, but it's, it is frustrating to see that. And I feel similar with our own resolution to support the charter, to some degree, this is something that's up to the voters. And when a commission, whether it's the BLP or us, steps forward in passive a resolution, it's partially because of our own experience and knowledge with it. But it definitely pushes voters to go one way or the other, they have a lot of respect for the people that sit on these boards and committees. And I think we should put some of the responsibility back on our citizens, to say, you know, as individuals, we feel this way, but, you know, this is a voter decision. Just wanted to express my feelings on that, as I lose my notes to my screensaver. I also want to congratulate the Market Food Co-op. I was in conversations with their general manager, Matt Goujon, and found out that because of the commercial rehabilitation district that we passed, they had received their grant for just over $160,000 for the food hub. And it's really nice to see some of the work that we've gone through, at least through deliberations. You know, it was a fairly lengthy discussion, and is this something we really want to go with, is it not? It's nice to see that through all of those discussions, the hemming and hawing, and the not sure if it's the right thing, to see that kind of support coming back to our community because of our initial support for it. So I wanted to let the commission and our citizens be aware of that, as well as, this is the last meeting that we have before we lose two of our commission members, one of, being our mayor, and one of, I'm not going through a Clint Eastwood moment. So I want to say, actually, thank you to the entire commission that I've sat with. Being younger and being the first time I've been on a commission, it's been really nice to serve with all six other commissioners. It's been educational, and I'm glad to have had two years of service with everybody here. That said, particularly Mayor Kivela, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I know that you've got some other irons in the fire, and we'll see where those go. I wish you the best of luck with them, but it's been a pleasure serving with you.
All right, thank you, Jason. Mr. DePietro?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to congratulate Department of Park and Recreation's heavy equipment operator, Wayne Goodwin, on his five years of service. He had been previously working at the Lakeview Arena, and is now working at the Public Works Park and Rec area. And I'd like to remind residents, starting of today, October 29th through November 2nd, Public Works Department is in the process of default leaf pickup. And make sure your vehicles are parked on leaf piles, or on a street that would hinder the leaf collection. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated by the Public Works crew. And I'd like to thank Northern Michigan University's Volunteer Center for organizing the Make a Difference Day throughout Marquette County this past weekend. Hundreds of volunteers worked throughout last Saturday to help residents with yard raking, window washing, moving outdoor furniture, and other service-related activities. Again, we thank Northern Michigan University Volunteer Center for organizing this great community event, in helping residents to get prepared for this upcoming winter, which is right around the corner. Also, I would urge the voters to vote for Mayor John Kivela as our next state representative for the 109th District of Michigan. We've had the pleasure of serving with John Kivela for the past six years, and will tell you regardless of party, John Kivela deserves your vote. We were in the room, and I had his first city budget meeting six years ago, when he felt after 39 years of city promises, the gravel streets of North Marquette must get paved during the budget, upcoming budget year, and that was accomplished. I was there when John Kivela proposed a plan to pass a senior millage to secure funding for our seniors, while lowering the general fund millage. John Kivela worked hard to get this passed, and we're better off for it. I was there when John Kivela said the real solution for truck traffic problems was extending 7th Street and completing McClellan Street Extension, and res servicing roads after decades of delays. This is being accomplished at this time. He was there when two young boys were pulled from the waters of Lake Superior. John Kivela commented, "We must do better," and behind his leadership, created the Water Safety Task Force to find the best answers, and then adopt them. Not only has it worked in Marquette, it's now being used as a model in the state of Michigan. And when President Obama arrived in Marquette, Mayor John Kivela was complimented by everyone involved with the visit, and how great a job he did hosting President Obama during his stay in Marquette. John Kivela was instrumental in working hard as he turned a bad relationship with our neighboring townships into a working partnership that we're all benefiting from today. This is an important election for all of us. I urge everyone to vote on Tuesday, November 6th. Marquette residents, vote yes on the proposed revised city charter, and please vote for the person that has presided over the most successful time in our city's history. Please vote John Kivela for our next state representative in the 109th District of Michigan. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Johnny. Commissioner Ryan?
I usually make a list of things that I might talk about at this point, and I had a list of the mayor here. You know, this is going to sound like a love fest, so I'll keep it short. The mayor and I haven't always agreed. There have been times we've disagreed, although we agree most of the time. But I would have to say he's been an excellent mayor for the city of Marquette. He's done a good job at this table, he's always been even-handed, making sure that each commissioner has an opportunity to say their piece, and get the discussion on the table, and he's also provided real leadership for our city, so. The city doesn't want to do that. I don't want the city spending $35,000 to put on the fireworks. It's a great event, but, you know, it goes up in smoke in one night. So I'm grateful that we have an organization that's willing to do that. Did they make the right decision that night? I don't know. It's debatable. But it wasn't the city of Marquette's decision to make. If there had been a danger, then the city could have made a decision. But it wasn't a significant danger in the view of those who make those judgments. So this was not the decision by the mayor. It was not the decision by this commission. It was not the decision by the city administration. It's by the group that raises through a hard work $35,000 to put those fireworks on. And, you know, if they made a mistake, well, they're, you know, they're entitled to one or two now and then. I'm not sure they did, but, you know, I just think we ought to put this issue behind us. I've had a lot of compliments about the McClellan Avenue extension, but I did mention to the mayor, one, to the manager, rather, one complaint I've received from a number of people, and that is the fact we have no streetlights on the extension between Center and Wright Street. We put in a sidewalk, but there's no street lighting there. So hopefully, that's something we can deal with. It has the manager's attention. But it also brought to mind, when we made the, when we approved purchasing the additional property, which we paid a pretty good price for, as part of the discussion that night, I did say I would like to see us, you know, as part of the plan, get those lots that could be for sale. And I don't see us moving on that, so I, you know, I'd like to hear more about that. You know, I think there were some residential lots there, potentially. I don't know if any planning was done with the utilities as they were put in. I had hoped they would have been. But, you know, this looks like low-hanging fruit to me, a chance to sell some of that property to regain the money that was spent and also to create some new development in the city. And finally, I just wish I was going home to watch the Detroit Tigers tonight. Really disappointed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Couple of things, if I can. Obviously, elections coming up. I would encourage everybody to vote, whatever your candidate, whatever your issue, make your voice heard. Make sure that you're there in the ballot box and, or not in the ballot box, but you're putting your vote in the ballot box, how's that? We're not in Chicago. I would also like to thank Mayor Kivela for the great leadership he's given this commission over a number of years. And John, you will be missed, I assure you. Just a comment, too. The ship that was lost off Cape Patteras was the HMS Bounty, and that was the sailing ship that was in Marquette 10 years ago. She went down with the loss of, I think, 14 or 14 people, and I think two of them are still missing. Certainly a loss to all of us who really enjoy seeing the tall ships. And we did have hopes to bring her back this summer. She was scheduled to be on Lake Superior and would be one of the packaged ships we would have tried to get back into Marquette, so it does have a personal connection here in the city. I would also like to thank the Arts and Culture Department here at the city, as well as the DDA, for that tremendous Halloween festival they put on downtown on Saturday night. I was not able to be there, but everybody I've talked to just raves about how successful it was and the number of people that were there. So I certainly would hope that they'll be able to continue that into the future. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, nothing?
All right. Thank you. Well, tonight, our thoughts and prayers should be with our friends and relatives and fellow citizens on the East Coast as they prepare to brave this strong hurricane that is of epic proportions, so please, everyone, keep them in your thoughts. This does conclude my final full meeting as a commissioner and mayor. I'm going to save my thank yous for the last farewell meeting, but I do want to tell everyone that it's been an incredible pleasure to serve, and wherever life takes me, I'll miss this. So, thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nothing further.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.[1748.16][1748.16]